Would you like to call the mayor, please? If you would, please, Spanner, put your hand in the air. Would you mind if I just...
Sure, sure. Let's pray. Thank you, Lord, for this body, this county, this great nation which we live in. Give us the wisdom to make the decisions in the best interest of the county and its people. May I ask in your name, amen.
Please, ladies and gentlemen, to the body of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
Next item is item two, reading the approval of last month's meeting minutes. There's a motion to approve. Take it down a second. Any discussion? All those in paper. Please raise your hand. Motion carries. Third item is old business. We have none. Item four is new business. We have on item eight, under new business, is a conditional use. I'd like to announce we'll have a public hearing for this conditional use for CU-190037. And I would like to ask, Justin, what the county's recommendation is?
Yes, sir. This conditional use application is for a 25.75 acre tractor property. Parcel ID is 019015. It's an agriculturally zoned piece of property, and this is for a RV campground, and that's what's triggered the conditional use. This piece of property lies in the Blaine character area as well as the rural development area. It's split by them. It fits in both of those. Some concerns with it, and for this one, I would like to ask the commission if they would render a decision on this application. The application is presented, is approvable if the requirements are met in the code as well as the site plan that they submitted. However, the appropriateness of the site is questionable. It butts right up next to a subdivision. And then the access requirements would need to be met according to GDOT standards, and right now they're doing the 136 widening over there in front of that property, as well as there's a large curve coming up next to J Moss. So, GDOT would have to approve that access. And hours of operation should probably be limited for the activities that they have planned. Other than that, I would like to ask the commission to render a decision on this one because of the extenuating circumstances about the site. Additional comments? In addition to this memo, I'd like to incorporate the entirety of the office's file and video recording of the planning commission's hearing, including the not alluded to all witness testimony in order that this information be made part of the record, and shall be available for the both commissions to review. If y'all have any other questions, I can answer them.
Are there any questions for Justin? If not, is Mr. -- is it Fegley? Fegley? Yes, sir. Is there anything you'd like to add or say?
I don't think so. It's going to be an RV resort. We plan to have, you know, things not just a camping area, it's going to be more, you know, for short-term camp, not long-term camp. There's a difference between a campground and a resort.
One of those...
Well, a lot of times the campground are just places where, you know, people will rent a spot for a month or whatever, where we're going to be inviting the, you know, the public as far as three-day stays or five-day stays or, you know, ongoing traffic for Carter's Lake and, you know, places like that, where there's really no campgrounds, no camping facilities available most of the time up there.
We have several people that signed up. I think they're all for this conditional use. I would like to see, they have how many minutes?
Ten, four, and ten again, sir.
Ten, four, and ten again?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, there's thirty-one, twenty-three... Six people here that have signed up. So, you each potentially have up to ten minutes, or if you would like to have nominated spokesperson, if y'all want to caucus for a few minutes and let one person be the same, you know, spokesman, it's up to you. I'm just giving you the options. Also, please keep in mind that the -- you're addressing this body here, not Mr. -- is it Fegley?
Fegley.
Fegley? You know, you're not asking him questions, and he's not asking y'all questions. It's directed to this board here, please, so please keep that in mind. So, I mean, like I said, the six people that want to speak out, if y'all want to assign one spokesman, or if all six y'all want to talk, that's fine too, because I'm just letting know the options, so. The first one is Mr. Rickney, or Rick, is it Bassett?
Yeah, so I need about ninety seconds. I don't know that we need to caucus and appoint anybody, but I own the acreage directly across from the proposed campground. Bought in there at the end of 2012, and obviously I bought in there for reasons a lot of people buy in these areas, to get peace and quiet and expecting to live in a residential slash agricultural area. And so, I'm vehemently opposed to putting this RV park in there. I think there's going to be, based on what I've seen and heard, there's quite a bit of traffic coming in and out, there's a lot of transientness to, you know, added to the area. I don't think it's -- I know it's not zoned for such, it's zoned ag and residential, and I would just ask that the planning commission consider opposing this. Thanks.
So, you're across 136...
No, I'm on the other side of Talking Rock Creek, directly across.
Oh, okay, so this backs up to you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. David Rutherford?
If it pleases the commission, David Rutherford, I'm a resident and landowner in Pickens County, and I oppose this for four principal reasons. It's a nuisance, there's a safety concern, there's an impossibility, and a failure of the Fegleys to meet the planning commission's own requirements. Nuisance, just as Mr. Bassett explained, it's a residential area, people are out there because it is residential and agricultural. I listen to a dog bark continuously in my neighborhood a quarter of a mile away. I can't imagine what it would be like to be backed up to a 55-unit RV park. In the event that this is approved, I respectfully suggest that what you'd be doing would be rewriting the law on Georgia on what does and does not constitute a nuisance. Safety concern, Mr. Kilgore mentioned it, it's on 136, and notwithstanding the realignment that's going on 136, it is in the middle, the access to this particular proposed development is in the middle of a very sharp vertical and horizontal curve. I can't imagine what would happen in the carnage that would ensue out there with 35- and 40-foot travel trailers trying to pull out onto and into off of 136. Might as well put a kiosk out there for the plaintiff's personal injury bar with the accidents that would occur. The third item, impossibility, you've looked at the site proposal that the Fegleys have submitted, it's very dense, 55 units, and the one thing that they have not addressed on there are the sanitation concerns with the septic. I respectfully submit that when, in fact, you look at what the septic requirements will be for this, it is virtually impossible to put an operating system on that. What they've shown you at the very bottom of their plat is an area that is ostensibly labeled for the septic, but if you run the numbers, you're looking at over 11,000 gallons per day minimum, and that site simply cannot accommodate that. Notwithstanding the fact that at the back of the property, track two is, which they don't plan on developing on because it's a floodplain, and that goes down to Talking Rock Creek, which is a trout stream, and so at that level with 11,000 gallons per day, you're into the EPA and NPDES requirements. And so, I respectfully submit that when you actually look at what would be required for this type of development, it is impossible to do that. And finally, they've not complied with the county's own requirements, and in that regard, they've not complied with item G, which is if the proposed development exceeds 100,000 square feet commercial, then they'll provide a traffic study, hydrology study, water, wastewater study prepared by a registered engineer. Now, what they've shown you on their plat is a 4,500-square-foot building, but they've also shown you 55 RV spots that'll occupy 900,000 square feet, and I suggest to you that that would warrant a hydrology study, traffic study, and environmental impact as per the commission's own requirements. They've also not complied with items three, eight, nine, twelve, or 16. 16 in particular says that wastewater facilities, including preliminary area, are reserved for drain fields and septic tank or point of access to public sewer where appropriate. There is no public sewer here, it'd be a septic. And when you look at what the requirements are, that's fairly steep property back there where they've shown the general area for their septic. When you're in that... When you're in that steeping area, you're on 16-foot centers, and you have to have 100% redundant system. Item 12 allows the county to require additional information, and I suggest to you that with this type of development, as suggested by Mr. Kilgore, additional information would be required. What you're being sold here is a pig in a poth, it's a wolf in sheep's clothing. And so, for those reasons, I respectfully ask that you deny it at this time with the option that they resubmit with more detailed information per the commission's requirements. Thank you.
Mr. Kevin Spanner?
He pretty much says this about it. Other than I do live, you know, right up against it, and I'll end up looking at all these camperies, you know, in my backyard. It's not what I signed up for, living there, you know, buying that house. And everybody else is definitely the same way, so he's got most of it said, and that's how I view it. I'm opposed.
Mr. Sean... Is it Puttitt? Puttitt, yes, sir.
Same thing he said, he said everything. I just bought the property on 464 J Moss Lane, it joins to his. I like it for quietness, I just feel like we're going to see a lot more campers back there, and just be real about it. I'm against it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Michael White? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'd like to start by saying, I'm Gary's next-door neighbor directly to the east on 7254, Highway 136. Wanted to start by saying, this is nothing personal against Gary, he and I are friends, he's been a good neighbor, we've helped each other out. My wife, Kristy, and I have lived in Pickens County for the last 20 years. To echo others' sentiments, we bought this property, you know, as a place for our girls to grow up on some acres, we're on 20 acres there on Talking Rock Creek. You know, we were happy in our little subdivision, but, you know, but just wanted a little bit more land to grow. So, just to echo others' sentiments, had we known that we'd be living next door to an RV park, we never would have purchased that property, and I'm definitely concerned. We're living in the house that was built in 19 something, right now, 900 square feet, with my wife and my two girls in one bathroom. Our plan was to build our dream home on the property, you know, if this were to go through, that's not going to happen, and my concern would be trying to sell the property with an RV park backed up to it. On top of that, as others have mentioned, the environmental concerns being along Talking Rock Creek. And that's all I've got. Again, my name's Mike White. Thank you.
Mr. Dennis Miller?
That's me.
Yes, sir.
I'm Dennis Miller, I live on J Moss Lane at the end on Talking Rock Creek. I expected more information tonight before I stood up and spoke, I may have missed something, an opportunity to look at drawings or other information, but I'll have to say at this point I'm opposed, and for a lot of the reasons that were mentioned earlier, I probably couldn't say anything else more about it, and all the good points, so I'm opposed to it.
Thank you. That's all the questions or comments for people that have signed up. Is there any questions from the board? From Fegley or...
You said this was going to be seized a little hot season, how many months should this be supported with the operational?
Probably like nine months.
And have the activity been farmed, might it be like private use, if you're just...
It would be just like that, and stuff, maybe a little exception or, you know, something like that.
Well, it would be private use, but people would camp it.
Most of the time would be activities with the campground.
And two places that said 55, and then on one street it said that there would be 41 parking spaces, you know, what is the difference there?
I'm not aware of that. It might be parking spaces, which is different from the sites.
Okay, okay, which is...
Parking spaces.
How did you plan to handle the sewage? Is each place going to have its own septic tank or common septic tank, or what's the sewage issue?
It would be a designing system, it would be a community designing system, probably based on the usage, which hasn't been determined yet. So, if so, 10,000 gallons would have to go to the EPD, if it's less than 10,000, it would have to be designed to help the park's drainage system.
Well, it seems like you want to know that before you got to this point of asking us to consider this. If I was going to invest money in something, I'd want to know all the ins and outs of it before I would ask someone to...
I've done the soil geologist, and I've done the telephoto, and I've looked at other campgrounds in the area, one that recently was just built, and that's how I found Reed, he actually designed that one also. So, they are aware of, you know, the soil, and where John is doing the soil stuff, and they're aware of what I have there.
I drove out there today to look things over, and the question that raised about safety on that road, and I had about four different cars attempt to run me over as I was attempting to look at what was going on there.
Right now it's a little bit harder because it's, you got the piles of rubbish there from tearing the trees out, plus they're supposedly taking that curve off, that's what the whole issue was there, they were taking the curve off, so... And they're supposed to, and they're widening the road and putting a bike lane in, so the sites are going to be... Plus, the other thing is mostly, most of the people will be leaving, which would be the pulling out, would be on Sunday, where there's a minimum of tractor-trailers running on Sunday.
But if these aren't tractor-trailers that are on there, there are people going home in a big hurry.
Well, the state is going to look at that, too, they've been working on that. Yeah, they're putting a bike lane in there also. And the roundabouts to slow the traffic down, that's what they said. And hopefully they'll lower the speed up.
Justin, have you looked at the issues that were raised by one of our speakers here relative to the deficiencies that he sees?
Yes, sir, you could, if y'all deemed it a commercial site, I think we'd probably need to have a talk with y'all and with the county attorney, because it is ag, and it's allowed as a conditional use in ag, so I don't know if we can necessarily classify it as a commercial, just because of what it is, but that wouldn't be my determination. As far as the other concerns, y'all pretty much have them, but I did talk to environmental health, it wouldn't be in EPD system, our environmental health wouldn't even look at the size that it is right now. Other than that, do you have anything else specific that you were wondering that...
Well, there are a number of issues raised there that all seem to be legitimate concerns that need to be understood. Counsel, do you have any thoughts?
Any other questions, comments?
What hours of operation did you plan on having the activities going on?
The quiet time will come during the party. And it's going to be family-oriented, it's not going to be, you know, we're, we are believers, and we've always gone in campground, we've been in campground and RV parks all of our life, ministry and different things, so it doesn't have to be a round crowd, you can control that, and we will not allow it.
You said a 14-day maximum, is there a way to stay a month with a day if they're allowed to at that point, still?
No, we're not looking to, we're not looking for full-time campers. We were in the same situation, we love Carter's Lake, we have a boat there, and the reason I bought this property was so that I could come to my property and actually, you know, park my RV there and go over to the lake, because everything is always full in that area, there's never any availability, everything's slammed full, all mountain, all the campgrounds in the area. So, we want to, we want to keep this available for people that come for short stay, we're not looking to take full-time campers. And most of the campground is in the upper half, which is pretty far away from the creek. There's an area that we left open, that's going to be the extra area for future, or for, not future, but in case the septic area fails or whatever, that's the reserve, is down closer to the bottom, but most of the RV is from the front to about two-thirds of the property. It's a long, narrow piece.
Chairman, may I address a concern with this on the...
Yes.
Under the code, stays are not allowed over 14 days according to our... There are a couple of exemptions, one's a natural disaster, one is construction, and the other one is if a citizen were to get a building permit for their property, they can get a permit from our office to stay there for a year, but that's only if they have a building permit. All other states for RVs in the county are 14 days.
May I ask, is that specifically for rentals, or is that in general?
What's that now, sir?
The 14-day stay.
I assume that's for just anybody, if you have a camper you wanted to come park it or, you know, stay on this campground on the campsite.
I mean, Gary will tell you, there's five of them down there right now next to the creek, so if that's, if that's 14 days max, period, I'm just asking if that's 14 days for rental or 14 days? I'm just curious, I don't know.
It's period, and if they wanted, if they had concerns about campers in the county, they could address those concerns with the county marshal, and he would stick to them.
Commissioner White, did you hear that?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
So, what will you do if they want to stay longer than 14 days and you can't get them out from there? Eviction-wise.
He just said you'd have to address that with the county marshal.
Okay, then will COVID play a role in that?
Pardon?
COVID. Like it is with eviction notices now? We can't evict the renter or tenant?
That I don't know, I don't know the answer to that question, ma'am.
You know, it would go to the property owner.
If you have a property owner?
The marshal would go to address the concern of the property owner.
It's against the ordinance to be in the camper in the county without permission from planning and development, so therefore if they have campers that they're staying in on the property now, then it would be against the ordinance, and they should not be in there.
Regardless of COVID or whatever. Does that answer your question, ma'am?
I understand you say there are already some campers on the property.
I own them.
Is that, I mean, how would that technicality, accounted with that technicality, he had a camper that was his, and he parked it where nobody lived in, is that, that doesn't really count? I mean, I guess you're...
It's occupied.
It's got to be occupied. Occupied full-time? For more than 14 days.
Okay, I get it. We let my kids stay there, I just got them, so they keep saying, they come a couple times, we all... I move around, there's five of them there. I have two motorhomes and three campers.
Yes, sir. Can I offer a point of clarification, please? If you look at the plan submitted by Fegley, there are two surveys. One shows tracks one and two, and the second, which is the proposed development, shows just track one. The reason it doesn't show track two, which is down at Talking Rock Creek, is track two is a floodplain. It is undevelopable. You can't put septic in, you can't have any development in. That's why they've shown you appropriately the development with 55 spots in track one. What they've also shown you is that back here, at the end of track one and immediately above track two, the undevelopable, undevelopable floodplain is an area for proposed septic at 11,000 gallons per day minimum, which drops it into the EPD to stay. There's an inadequate amount of area here for a septic field, much less to require 100% redundant septic field. And you can't put it up here underneath where you have your people, you can't have anything above your septic field. And that's why I respectfully suggest that what they've proposed at the 55-unit level... And that's why I respectfully suggest that what they've proposed at the 55-unit level is impossible. It'll never happen on this property. Because of the size and nature of the development, I would suggest that they provide the studies that you're on guideline for conditional use, state. And that's Item G, and in particular, Item 12, which is any other information deemed necessary by the Planning and Development Office or the Board of Commissioners in Pickens County because of the use proposed, the needs of the area, or the sensitivity of an area because of topographical, hydrological, or environmental constraints. To the extent that this is to be a real development, I would suggest that real information, meaningful information, and studies should be done and submitted. Thank you.
I would like to clarify something on Track 1 and Track 2. There was an adjustment made on that track. You know, it was surveyed, and that's Track 2. It's just a little sliver, starts at nothing and goes out to the creek, which is about 10 feet wide. That's Track 2. Track 1 goes from the front of the property all the way to the creek. And there's only the last, the last five acres of, where you go down the hill is where the creek is, where the flood plain is. But that's not Track 2. Track 2 is a revised piece of land that goes down the left side of the property from nothing to about 15 feet. When they did the GPS surveys, they adjusted that.
Any other questions? Mr. Chairman, I feel that this proposed RV park, based on what I've heard here this evening, is a detriment to the surrounding property values and the use of enjoyment of homeowners that have been there for some time. I also have a concern, a public safety issue concern about ingress and egress and campers. And for that reason, I would propose that we recommend to the commission to deny the request. Okay. A second. A move in second to deny the request. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of denying the request, will you press it in? You have this? That hearing is closed on Item 1. For Item 8, you could, Item D, we're not sure, we'll have a, open up a public hearing for Item D, which is a rezon request, RZ-190038. And I'd like to ask, Justin, what kind of recommendation is for it?
Yes, sir. This is a 11-acre tract. It's located off the Four Mile Church. It's a portion of tax parcel number 049033. The property's currently listed agricultural. They'd like to rezone the property to rural residential. It's splitting these properties in half. One piece is going to one homeowner that abuts the property, and the other half is going to the other homeowner that abuts the property. Staff recommends that the application for rezoning be approved. It matches the rural development area standards for the conference of plan. And in addition, in addition to this memo, I hereby incorporate the entirety of the office's files and video recording of the planning commission's hearing, including an audit to all witness testimony and order that this information be made part of the records and shall be available for the Board of Commissioners. Do y'all have any other questions? Put something out.
Mr. Ray? Is someone here, speak for Mr. Ray?
The State Department Commissioner of the County is Kelly Carian. I'm a realtor for the Land Communities. I represent Mr. Ray and Mr. Payne. They simply bought that additional 11 acres as a buffer to maintain their privacy against future development in the area. So Mr. Ray would like to have the five acres, five-and-a-half acres he's wanting completely put back with the property he currently owns. And I believe you want to keep yours just separate. He's got access on Four Mile Church Road, and Mr. Ray would be landlocked, so he just wants to incorporate his, with his existing property. That's all we want to do.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Justin?
I want the rezoning to be approved.
Sorry, ma'am. I have a move in second to include the rezon request. Is there any discussion?
My first question, just, I'm interested in what the zoning changes with the land now from ag to residential. How does it change the use of the property?
Do you want to?
So agricultural has some agricultural uses along with the single-family residential component. Rural residential is a smaller lot requirement. It's an acre-and-a-half requirement. Ag is an minimum of 10 acres. This parcel is 11 acres. They're splitting it in half. The adjacent properties are zoned rural residential. Pickens County does not allow this similarly zoned properties to be joined. So the property would have to be rezoned rural residential instead of, say, something like small ag, which is five acres. So it still allows some agricultural uses and is still only single-family residential. But the reason why this request is rural residential is because it matches the adjacent zoning.
Thank you. All right, so we have a move in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please press your hand. Motion, press your hand, Mr. Ray. The hearing is closed. Item 5 is board comments. Are there any board comments? I just say, as always, we appreciate folks coming out, sharing their information with us. Let us know what they think about these issues. It helps us make the best decisions. Thank you for coming out. That's all. Any other comments? Are there any public comments? Item 7 is adjournment. I hear the motion to adjourn. Show move.
Seven.
A move in second, meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming out.